Sorry for the delay of a couple of seconds. I'm going to take one thing out of order because I believe it's going to be one of the shortest items that we have. So I'm going to go with 2.7, the status update on the Sales Tax Department reorganization, Ms. Ashi.
Good evening, Stacey Ashi, Director of Sales Tax Office. I wanted to give a brief update on the Sales Tax reorganization. The Sales Tax Office was reorganized in November of 2015 to increase the staff by six, two of which are auditors. Our internal audit staff collected 1.5 million in audits in the 2015-2016 year, which is 762,000 over the 1415 year for all jurisdictions. Currently, they have 76 active audits in place. Our compliance department monitors approximately 15,000 active taxpayers. These accounts are monitored on a scheduled basis. They issue notices to include 10 days, delinquent notices, 15-day notice of proposed assessment, and 60-day assessment letters. Over the last few months, the compliance department has forced registered 56 accounts. Currently, we have 126 active accounts being worked by our legal department for collections which total $4 million. We are currently working with various ways to identify new businesses with various jurisdictions. We are also in the process of setting up our annual training to help educate taxpayers to be held in September and October. And then there's a schedule that's attached that gives a schedule of the school board share of what our internal audit has collected and the cost of the reorganization.
Ms. Ashi?
Yes, sir.
Can you give us your opinion as to what went into nearly doubling the collections from audits in the past year?
Brent, would you like to?
Yeah, I guess a lot of it has to do with the management of the audits and having somebody. We have actually, we have an auditor three and an audit manager who help. We have more personnel and the two people at the top have the knowledge, so we have more audits being assigned, more active, and we're much more efficient than we were.
Is there, was there an increase in the number of audits? Or I guess maybe a better metric might be the amounts, amount collected per audit? Is that flat?
Both.
Both?
Yeah.
Right.
Do we have any kind of agreement in place? I know one of the things that we discussed last year this time was working with the district attorney in some fashion as the, I don't want to say collector of last resort, but when we do finally give up on trying to collect through our normal methods, do we have? I know we did not have an agreement with the district attorney in place and that there is, I think, Repeat's Parish had-
Correct.
-an agreement with their district attorney.
Right.
Have we done anything on that? Do we, are we working on it?
We're putting in an RFP to get another council because there will be a number of more accounts that we will have to turn over for audit. So we still haven't gotten anything from the district attorney's office as of yet.
So the RFP would be if the district attorney, if we're not able to work something out with the district attorney-
Correct, yes, sir.
...would be the RFP? What is the, what is the?
It's for collections, like for our collection side of that piece.
The legal side of the collections?
Correct, the legal collections, yes, sir.
And how do, and is that, would that be a staff member or would that be a contracted service?
Contracted services.
Thank you very much for coming to tell.
Thank you.
Mr. Centani?
Yes, sir.
I did want to mention, in addition to what Ms. Ashi has already shared with us, the total collections, and by total collections, audit collections for all taxing entities generated by our LPSS auditors exceeds the total cost of the entire department. So in essence, the collection piece, the day-to-day processing of approximately $230 million annually of collections comes in at no charge. It's all, however you want to look at it, but I was very encouraged to see that the collections they've generated in essence pays for, the auditors pays for the entire department, including those that are in non-auditing positions.
That's a very good point, Mr. Gidry. I remember last year when we added the auditors to that department and the budget stated that they would pay for themselves with increased collections. So I'm glad to hear that it is actually working out the way we planned, so nice work.
One other thing that we're looking into, we've contacted, contacted, and I think we have a meeting scheduled next Tuesday? Or have we already met on that one? I lose track of it, but we have two options we're looking at. One is to try to get our local municipalities to change their ordinances, which would allow us to coordinate and computerize a comparison of our, the taxpayers within their jurisdiction versus those that have registered. And if, if we're not successful with our efforts there, or it may be, you know, some of the municipalities are able to do it and others don't, we have a second option that we're looking at as well, where we can compare existing reporting and possibly identify potential taxpayers there as well, those that have not registered, the Sales Tax Department, but have obtained occupational licenses, let's say. So that is something that's in progress. It's been a little slow just from the standpoint that when you look at the reorganization that was approved in August, it's been quite a few people that have been added, trained, entire compliance department set up. The legal piece of it, more or less placed on a more, in a more standardized environment. But with that, for the most part, behind us, we're going to turn our focus to the legal RFP and to the ordinances that I just referenced to see if we can't get some automated comparison processes in place to assist our compliance department in identifying unregistered taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Gidry. All right, so we'll go back to the top of the agenda. Item number one, the Como High Performing Arts, excuse me, the Como High Performing Arts Auditorium. Who's going to? Dr. Aguilar, Mr. Bordelone, Mr. Gidry, how are we going to, how do y'all want to do this?
Members of the board, you may remember that the Facilities Committee sent this item to the Finance Committee for consideration. There had been a presentation made by various architects that were kind enough to offer their expertise regarding anticipated cost of an auditorium, which was tagged at about $12 million, as well as the instructional areas to support the Performing Arts Academy, which is about $6 million of cost. So I think for consideration, the Facilities Committee wanted you to make a decision about, did you want to go the route of considering $6 million of additional instructional areas at Como High School or consider an auditorium at Como High School as a Phase One?
And, Mrs. Centani, we do have representatives of various architectural firms. If you wanted to hear a professional opinion about instructional areas for a price tag of about $6 million, we've got people here available to do so.
I think, I think we'd like to hear about that, yes.
Eric Crozier, Abel Crozier Davis Architects, would love to answer any questions or attempt to.
I guess, I was present for your presentation on the Phase One and the Phase Two auditorium and the instructional spaces. And I guess my question ends up being, how, how much of the existing facility are we intending to repurpose for this? Or will this be entirely new space on the campus itself?
According to the cost estimates and working with LPSS, that's all new space. We did not budget any renovated space in that particular scenario.
If I remember correctly, I'm trying to, is Phase One the auditorium?
Correct.
Or is it Phase, all right, so let me go back to Phase Two here.
I think we were talking about flipping. Is Phase, option two, Phase Two is the one that we're considering as now Phase One?
Okay, so Dr. Aguilar, if the attachment entitled instructional spaces is, okay, so that's Phase Two. So was this the one that came in at, is that 320 per square foot, if I remember correctly? Or was that the auditorium?
No, the auditorium was 320, that one was less. I'm sorry, I don't have my information in front of me, but the auditorium was more than, was the higher cost.
Okay, so I think I'd say 237-
Yeah, that sounds right.
...per square foot.
And? Option two. Yeah, they had selected option two, Phase Two.
313 for the auditorium. So can you, can you help us? I think, and one of the questions that I get often, and certainly I don't have a good answer for it and I'd like to have one, is what drives the cost per square foot to such a number? 313, I know 237 is less, but what goes into generating that number?
Well, let's look at 313 first. So the auditorium is traditionally a fairly expensive square footage. You know, you've got high volumes, high-volume spaces, you know, they're real high. You've got a lot of acoustics, you've got a lot of equipment in there, there's a lot of study that goes with those. So that's a very specialized space. The air conditioning systems in there have quite a bit more to them. You know, you've got a lot of energy management systems, you've got a lot that goes into those spaces. The classrooms aren't necessarily quite as bad. If you look at the total numbers, you know, you had spaces in there that were 160 a foot, you had spaces that were 240 a foot, you had, you know, those are averages. So, you know, one, the auditorium and those support spaces are driving the cost up because those are expensive to build regardless of where you build them. So, you know, those 237 a square foot numbers, those are based on, you know, current contractor discussions and, you know, current numbers that we're using on the school now and other numbers in the area. So they're certainly informed numbers as to our current market here.
So I-
And then this is not renovated space, I'm sorry, Justin, but you are demolishing buildings, you've got, you're working around students, you've got to tie into existing facilities, you've got underground utilities you're going to have to work around and move. So it's not, when you, when you go into an existing campus, you've got things that you're going to have to mine through. A greenfield site is a little different. Part of it is more predictable than trying to insert or tie into an existing building.
Now I've forgotten what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Your answer was much better than what my question was going to be, I promise. Do you guys have any, any questions about this, this cost?
If the, on the Phase Two, it's a new facility?
Uh, yes.
What happens to that if we decide later on to go with Phase One? Is that an add-on to it? I mean, because Phase One is twice the amount of money as Phase Two.
Right, Phase One was the auditorium. So that's where the, oh, it's auditorium, there's support spaces for the auditorium in there as well. You know, it's a pretty good-sized building. But the idea would be when, when the design team would be selected for that, you would, you know, you'd certainly have to make sure that you're, when you build Phase Two first, that you'd know how you're going to deal with Phase One later. But the idea right now is that you certainly wouldn't demolish anything that you would build in Phase Two to deal with Phase One. I think you'd have to plan that out a little better. Right now, I think there's room to do both. According to Wayne Domains diagrams, they look very good and it looked like they were very well thought out. So I think that there is room, it's been studied, you know, they give a really good look at it. So I hope I answered your question.
Was there any, were there any plans that included using existing facilities? Incorporating them, transitioning, repurposing? But I know that would significantly drive down the cost with the existing floor walls and ceiling.
Right. It's possible. We didn't do that, we were on the, sort of the dollar side. I don't think that the other design team was asked to look at that. In conversations with, you know, LPSS, I don't think that, they felt like that was a very good option. You know, those spaces were utilized. There was maybe one space that, that might be torn down because of its age and its lack of being able to be flexible, from what I recall. But as far as adapt and reuse, no, I don't think that was looked at as closely as it maybe could be. But I think that there are uses for all the rest of those spaces that have potential other plans for those spaces inside the building. I don't think it's out of the question to look at that, though.
Yeah, I don't know if that would require us to request it as a, as a committee or as an individual board member, but I think we could save a whole lot of money, a whole lot of money, if we go ahead and use those existing facilities. Because I was actually sold on the notion that with 1,000 less kids at the school, that's why we needed to bring programs to Como. And whether that number is 1,000 or 900, whatever that may be, I mean, I was explicitly told that there would be significant, a significant amount of classrooms that would now be available or empty. So we needed to then repopulate those classrooms. Otherwise, it would be a situation like what's occurring at Northside right now, where we're only at 51% capacity. So I guess that would be a question for either Mr. Craig or Dr. Aguilar.
Dr. Shasson, just want to caution you that if, if we go the route of repurposing existing space, then we literally cannot do any work this 1617 school year at all because we're using that space currently. So I would caution you that if we then go in and start demolishing space that's available, then we have to restrict the population size through rezoning to Como High School an additional two years while we build out these new facilities. That's why the clean palette was the option that we preferred, that we, we have space, it's available. The room that is going to be vacated at Como High School because we're moving 900 students, we're going to be moving other students into those classrooms and those spaces. So I'm not sure that, that that's the best route because we end up with partial Como High School rather than a full and complete Como High School if we built it out separately.
So right now, they're at 1,800 students, right?
1,930, yes, sir.
And we expect that Southside High is going to take 1,000 or 900?
We're thinking Southside's opening enrollment will be about 900 students.
And that will all strictly come from Como?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
A lot of the savings from the auditorium and the classroom spaces are from the 15 to 17 portable buildings, which is 30 classes. So you'd, you'd build your classroom spaces and your auditorium over there on the southeast side and remove some of those portable buildings after construction.
So all the portables are now going to be gone?
Well, I'm not sure they're all going to be gone in this project, but presumably if we're successful in some kind of bond proposition in the future, we want to dramatically reduce the number of temporary buildings on our campuses.
I'm just trying to keep our costs down as much as possible. I know we need to-
Yes, sir.
-give the kids and the school the facilities that they need, but I was under the impression the entire time that if we, if we're decreasing enrollment to, to that extreme by 1,000 kids and we're going to then repopulate with 441 kids from performing arts, then that only brings us to like 1,300 kids, which means we're still only 75% of the way full. And then at that point, we can build what we need to and yet still use the, the amount of space. For instance, if half the school is now going to be empty, technically speaking, like let's say if we didn't move performing arts, then half the school is now empty. So if we're only adding back 441 kids, then we're only adding half of what we had taken out the first place. So then, we can then repurpose those empty, that, those empty classrooms or the empty situation that we now have and then subsequently move the kids around while we're still building. Because it's not like we're bringing an entire 1,000 kids back onto the campus, we're only bringing half of what we took off in the first place. That's how always-
Well, we haven't seen Mr. Hefner's high school rezoning plan just yet, hasn't been presented to the board. I suspect it's going to be more than the 431 performing arts students. I think the staff's thought this through carefully and, and I want to say once again, we think the clean palette is the way to go. Otherwise, we're repurposing instructional areas and that's really not, I believe, in the best interest of the performing arts program to start with repurposing existing facilities and model them, make them usable and acceptable when the opportunity presents itself to begin really building out a state-of-the-art performing arts program for the district at Como High School.
We're clearly agreeing to disagree, but-
Yes, sir.
I do want to get them everything that they do need, but at the same time, the exact facilities that they fought not to leave weren't designed for them in the first place. So I'm not trying to just make do at the current time, I'm trying to use our existing facilities because the classroom that they were using was technically speaking the wrestling room that had been, you know, placed in with, with mirrors and whatnot. So I guess we do need to see Mr. Hefner's.
I can tell you that the population at Youngsville Middle School is nearly 1,000. At Milton Middle School, I think they have pretty close to 400 at the middle school level. And then Broussard Middle has, I want to say, 730 after we rezoned last year. All those kids go to Como right now. So I think, I think what you're going to see from Mr. Hefner from the five-year population projection that we requested from him is that Como's on track to be the new Lafayette High-
Right.
...as far as thousands of children in one facility. So I would, I would caution to think that Como's going to be static at 12 or 1,300 or whatever the actual enrollment ends up being next fall. I think you're probably going to see growth again. You're going to see growth at Southside and, you know, we're going to have to go through the rezoning every three or four years, just like we should, but, you know, we're going to have to reconfigure this again. So keep that in mind when we talk about repurposing classrooms, is that if we have them as classrooms, it might be classrooms that we need one day. And it may be in our best interest to convert it to a piano room now or build a piano room and intend to use that classroom in the future. The second point I'll make to your question was, I believe from, this is going from memory, Mr. Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the number of permanent classrooms that Como has is about two-thirds the number of Lafayette High. If I remember right, it's like something right short of 70 permanent classrooms and another 30-something portable classrooms. So it's, 1,500 is not 75% full. 1,500 is probably either full or a little bit more than full. So let's, I think that's probably an important part to keep in mind. Anyway, do you have any, anything further right now?
No, just a, just a final statement. The, when, when this was explained to us, it was explained that Como's going to lose 1,000 kids. And when they lose the 1,000, then we need to then repopulate that school. So taking the 441 from performing arts, because now we're going to have empty classrooms. And now we're not using those empty classrooms, we're building entire new classrooms. I understood the auditorium situation, but now this solution to a problem that occurred is now evolving to something else.
I'm with you. I'd like to explore. I mean, it's, it's certainly incumbent upon us to look at what we have and, and what would best serve the long-term needs. I mean, I'm not opposed to converting, I mean, to your point, the, Ms. Macklemore, the piano teacher at Lafayette High was in a converted conference room. I mean, there was nothing special about that room other than the fact that they took the conference table out and put a bunch of pianos in. But she, but she did an excellent job with what she had. Now, I'm not suggesting that we make her go and continue teaching piano in a, in a conference room. I think we, we need to really support what is clearly our most popular school program at the elementary, middle, and high school level. So that said, I do have a couple of other questions about the, the price. You know, I was, I spoke with an architect in Brobridge a couple of months ago and I believe Brobridge High was, they had a, he, he had drawn up some plans at the request of the St. Martin Parish School Board to build a 250-seat auditorium and, you know, it was the kind of thing where it had folding chairs and, you know, it wasn't, you know, nice rows of seats, but that came in at, I think, $2.5 million, and this was in 2012 or something like that. And then the Iberia Parish just opened the auditorium at Jenneret High, I think, and they spent $4 million. And I don't, I don't know, obviously it's not an 800-seat auditorium, I think it's more like 250 or 300. So my question ends up being now that where do we get, like, what do we have, what are we building for 12 that, you know, what are we getting extra? I guess is what I'm saying, right?
It's a dedicated space.
Those were not, my understanding was that the Brobridge, the Brobridge High was a standalone auditorium.
Right, it could have been. I don't know the specifics.
And I'm not asking you to comment on the specs, but yeah.
But it's, it is difficult to understand when you compare an apples to apples or, is it a green apple or a red apple, or is it a pear and an apple, or what is it? You know, so we run into this all the time. You know, why is this cost more than that? Whenever we were putting this budget together, you know, what, what I do is look at multiple sources. So I try to find somebody who's done something like this, and it's not easy to find. We're calling Baton Rouge, New Orleans, because when was the last time we built an auditorium in Lafayette like this? I mean, we were all in elementary school, right? So this is not a very easy benchmark to find. I think if you look at our spreadsheet, we're 350 a foot for the auditorium space, that's not overly generous. You know, we were, a lot, some of these numbers were closer to 400 a foot or more. So, you know, we were trying to find, and what we're trying to do is, is come up with an estimate, but it, when we compare costs from other places, we've got to know a little bit more about what we're comparing. So, you know, it's a difficult question to answer, but they are very expensive spaces to build and especially if it is dedicated auditorium space, you know, that is a performance, a performance space, you know, every detail gets looked at a little differently than if it's a, not a dedicated space.
So I think the, and this is going to be a general question, you know, the, we have a 30, was that 32,000 square feet that I saw? Was that what the number was? Was that what the number was?
Yeah, that sounds righteous.
Thirty, thirty-two, two eighty-two. The, the Brobridge plan, I'll just refer to it as that, was about ten thousand square feet. And I, I guess we, they did not have, just to pick something at random, you know, like the coral suite. They, they probably just had a, you know, stage and a place, a place to perform, I would imagine. So, and maybe this is a question for Dr. Roban. And maybe, maybe you can contribute to this conversation. So what is, if we built you, let's, let's start off with a space and a stage and, you know, maybe not permanent seating or folding, you know, whatever you wanna call it, folding chairs. What is important, what makes the most difference in the instruction for the students as an add-on? You know, I mean, it's, without seeing pic- pictures of it, I'm picturing like off the auditorium, maybe you have a, a wing with, with these rooms where, is that where the education would take place? The string suite or the coral suite or?
Probably. You know, I think if you, the presentation that was made last time, there was a, a wing that was, I'm sorry, directly adjacent, must be Italian, I have to talk with my hands, uh, adjacent to it. And then you've got the auditorium. They're a very close proximity. And then even in the auditorium, the auditorium is a teaching space as well, right? It's a big teaching space, right? So it's, you know, I don't know if it would have, if, if you were factoring capacity, would you give the auditorium capacity? I don't know that you would, but to say that it's not a teaching space, I think it certainly would be. But, um, and behind it, you've got all of the shop space and all the other things that go along with it that if you save money and didn't do it, okay, but then what? Because you need all that space. You know, where does it come from? So I'm sort of somewhat answering for him as well.
I know. Do you wanna give your own answer or, or do you agree with that? You're welcome to accept his answer if you like. Yes, please. Yeah.
Well, I'm kinda nerd and I've been doing some research too. And I, I imagine that Brobridge facility might be just a flat floor. I know I taught at some universities that quote-unquote had an auditorium and it was just basically a long room that was flat with chairs and a little wooden stage. Um, he's probably talking about a proscenium theater which goes and has the dip as the, the people and the audience rise. Um, you're looking at acoustical differences to actually be performing in an actual acoustic space as opposed to say, calling this an auditorium and an oral experience, um, you're not gonna learn how to do lighting or stage design if you don't have the lights and the stage design and all those sort of things that you'll have if you go to the ACA or the Hyman Center. And so if we wanna build internships and things like that, the whole auditorium, if it's built right, becomes the actual teaching ground where we lecture in the classroom, but we learn, perform our art and craft and learn how to make a living at it in that actual space. 'Cause you can talk about how to run lights. You can talk about what it sounds like to be in an auditorium or how you have to adapt the way you perform or how you light a certain scene. But if you're not physically hands-on doing it, then the, the, the learning process has just become studying a textbook again and never actually doing it. So from looking at his, you know, the plans that they put out, it looks like they're designing a facility that's designed to train the students for what they'd actually encounter as they become performing artists so that they can get jobs and, and pay taxes to the school board so we can have more money. Right? Does that answer your question?
You're a man that's my own heart, Dr. Roban.
Thank you.
So Mr. Crozier, I know you and I had a brief discussion after the facilities meeting last month about, you know, you don't just reduce the square footage and it goes down accordingly, right? Because you have some higher, as you said earlier, you have some higher cost per square foot areas, some lower cost per square foot areas. Have you had a chance to think, I made the, the, the comment that there's, there must be a tipping point somewhere where, because this is an eight-hundred-seat auditorium, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we can't just say, let's build four hundred and it costs six, right?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a, a sweet spot or a tipping point where we actually reduce it enough that we do see some, some significant savings on the cost?
I think we kinda feel like maybe about five hundred, somewhere in there.
So like if you-
Five, six hundred, five fifty.
And, and obviously you're not gonna say, you're not gonna save the three? Or is that, is that the case? I guess it all depends since there's high-cost areas and low-cost areas. It depends on what-
Right, right. It depends on what we, you know, when you-
Like if you go from, you get to go to a smaller HVAC system, if you go small enough, that kinda thing?
We kinda felt like they were, that was getting us closer to that.
Uh-huh.
But I think that's still, when you're designing the building, that would be the charge at that point, is to find that sweet spot exactly. But in order to, you're right, you know, if you're, if you cut all the square footage around the auditorium and left the auditorium at eight hundred, your cost per foot would go up.
Right, because that's the most expensive piece.
Right. So cost per foot, it's a little, it's the benchmark that a lot of us use, but it's a little bit of a dangerous benchmark. So, but yeah, that's kinda what we're thinking, maybe five hundred, somewhere in that range between five and six hundred. You'd probably save some dollars that would be significant back to you.
So conversely speaking, if we reduce the size of the auditorium, that's our greatest savings, right? I just wanna make sure I'm thinking about this right, correctly.
Well, if you're trying to attack the highest per square foot cost, right?
Oh, no.
You just know if you, when you take, when you go from eight hundred to five hundred, you're not going back to eight hundred.
Yes.
It's gonna be five hundred forever.
Right.
If you cut the other support spaces, two years later, you can come back and add the support spaces. You could have it back again. So when the eight hundred goes to five hundred, it's there forever at that size essentially. So yeah, you're targeting the higher per cost, cost per foot areas. But there are ramifications of, of that, you know, targeted effort like that. So.
Is Mr. Dugan here? Gee, I have a question for you, if you don't mind. All right. Have we done any further research as, as to, I know there was some discussion about if we did build the, you know, the bigger auditorium, that it could be a community. We, we would have very little trouble running it out. And I know the, I know that we then run into the problem of us actually using it if we're going, if we're intending to generate any kind of revenue off of it. So have we done any further research on that?
No, after the last meeting, we really didn't know where the board was gonna head, so we kinda froze on that project. You have the Hyman Center, seats around twenty-two hundred, I believe. Anger Hall is about eight hundred. ACA is about three hundred. And I'm on the board of ACA and it's very difficult to put anything in a three hundred seat theater that, that's of any means that you can not, can have a decent price ticket. 'Cause no matter, you know, how ca- how much the band is or the, the performance is, you're divided by three hundred, it's, it's gonna be high. It's the math works in. So the more seats you have, and, and I think what his point was is once you build the stage and lighting and all that, that's where your expense is gonna be. The seats are not necessarily, even though they're in the auditorium, the most expensive part of the auditorium. You have the same-sized stage and you have six hundred seats or eight hundred seats. You know, where's your capacity to rent it out or to, you know, grow or have a performance at Como High School? That you can have eight hundred kids in a fourteen-hundred kid school as opposed to six hundred or five hundred when your stage is really the same thing. But we, no, we haven't moved forward on that.
Yeah, okay. I, I mean, I'm sure you can see my point here is that I'm, I'm more interested at the base level of, of, you know, if, let's say, performing arts, when these guys perform, they average three hundred attendees. Well, then I'm interested in building something that satisfies their needs rather than, before I, before I decide I wanna spend the extra money to build a bigger auditorium, I, I would like to know that there is actual community demand for this type of facility that we would actually be able to have people in and, and support the facility. Because I'm all for something being nicer and more, uh, more educational for the kids as they move out into the world, but-
There's definitely a community demand and it would be a matter of timing of to when the school needed the facility, they would definitely have priority. And if that would be on the weekends or if that would be in April and May where there's a high demand for, for dance reviews and, and things like that. Uh, the summer would probably be the lowest demand and that's when it would be empty. So, you know, it, it's, it's a matter of, of, of chicken before, chicken and egg thing, you know? If it's a six-person theater, eight-person theater, what, and what the school would, would need in that case. I, I do have the same one parish plans here. It is just a stage. There's, there's a couple of dressing rooms, but there's no classrooms or learning spaces. It's flat.
What, what determines the average cost? Per feet?
What determines the average cost per foot?
What determines? Is, is that a universal, uh, number that various architects have?
Every, every market is different. Lafayette, Lafayette area has its benchmark. Baton Rouge has its, has its, New Orleans, Houston. Uh, the rural areas depends on what kinda project it is. It could go up or it could go down. So, uh, you know, when we're putting these together, there are published documentation that, you know, in fear in an area you would add a percentage or you would deduct a percentage. We would probably use that as one of our benchmarks. And then we, I mean, we, we typically go out to the contractors. I mean, they're the ones that are really on the pulse of the market here in the area. So they gave us their, they were kind enough to give us their feedback on most of that information.
And you guys did this, did this mock drawing up of the, of the numbers out of the kindness of, of you guys' hearts? If-
Yes.
If Awoe Crowder and Davis, let's say, it goes, this goes through RFP, RFQ? Anybody know? Kyle?
I'm sure it would.
RFQ?
Yeah, for this amount of money, yes.
Is this the, would you say this is the typical cost we would be looking at? I mean, I'm, I'm sure we're gonna get, when this is put out, we're gonna get folks that the number is dramatically much lower or it's a little higher or round about the same price?
Yeah, I wouldn't think it's gonna be dramatically one way or another. You know, if, if you think about where we started, what, what we did with this exercise, you know, the school system was kind enough to have some staff put some things together. And, you know, we were getting information from multiple sources and you're putting together some benchmarks for you. You know, I think once the design is on paper, there's gonna be certainly more clarity at that point. There'll be more decisions that'll have to be made at that point too. We certainly put, you know, the, the two firms, ours and Architects Southwest, we communicated together on, you know, what, what was happening in each, 'cause we had, there was actually three phases or actually three options. So we kinda looked at each one a little bit and, you know, did we spend two hundred hours? No. But, um, you know, we feel pretty comfortable with it, you know, especially with the high school going up. We have got some fairly accurate numbers on, on a lot of things that are very similar. You know, we don't have an auditorium, but we do have a black box. You know, we do have other things that those contractors were helping us get. And, and honestly, we added some numbers to it because for the Southside, it's getting amortized over two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. You know, you can't, that, that black box is less expensive on our site than it would be somewhere else. So we tried to adjust for some of those ideas.
Okay. So basically speaking, we, we have to decide before this goes to an RFQ situation. We do have to decide how many, how many seats. I understand the, the bulk of the cost is the stage and that, that area. But we still do have to decide 'cause we will be adding square footage to the, to the auditorium. We do have to decide what, how many, how many seats we would like it to hold, correct?
Yes, sir.
We'd like it to hold eight hundred.
Right.
But this is the problem.
Right.
And members of the committee, based on the prior conversation that took place, I think the mood and the sentiment was that the full board might wanna look at the lesser of the two pieces of this project, which would be the instructional areas. That's why we focused quite a bit of our energy on thinking about the instructional areas rather than the auditorium. Some of the comments that were shared during the public discussion was that we, we already have a Lafayette Middle auditorium. We have an NP Moss Middle. We have NP Moss auditorium. We have the Lafayette High auditorium. We also have other buildings and, and auditoriums in Lafayette that we have access to. What we might wanna do is use our resources, and they're not infinite. They're, they're somewhat limited. Use our resources and build the instructional areas knowing that down the road, we would consider building the auditorium to finish that project. Mr. Guidry is prepared to share with the finance committee tonight a revised project listing for the bonds that will be sold to support Southside High School, Catherine Drexel, Milton and, and whatnot. With your permission, I think I would like him to walk through the available bonds, bonding capacity and show you that we do have six million dollars of bonding capacity available to the board. And I think the decision that the finance committee would need to make, do we proceed with recommending to the full board the instructional areas or the auditorium? Or, or both or neither? So with your permission, Mr. Guidry, could, could-
Just one sec, one second. In, in your, in your opinion, seating for eight hundred, I see, I see the price. Would you be able to guesstimate? And I know that may be tough or maybe that's something very easy for you at this point. What, six hundred and four hundred? And I can't hold you to it. I won't hold you to it, but I'm just curious. I just, I just like to toss them around in my head.
I had a dollar for every time somebody- Oh, gosh.
I had a dollar for every time I asked him that.
So half the size at four hundred. I'll just go with one.
The biggest issue is that the stage size doesn't change. You know, it's four thousand square feet. You know, you put a hundred seats in, I got a four thousand square foot stage. Even the fly loft, you got all those things behind it. So I'd really hesitate to, to take a guess, but we'd have to look at the, the mechanical system a little bit more to see, but I, I would really, I'd really hate to say. You know, I mean, I know that's a cop-out, but-
I really would like you to though, if you wouldn't mind.
You really would.
I really would.
That, how can I say no to that face?
A lot of-
You know, ten percent's one point two.
Okay.
Right? If you're cutting thirty percent of your seats, you know, you could probably cut a million five. You know, something like that. You're not gonna cut in half. You know, from the auditorium standpoint, six million, you know, you're leaving a lot of square footage in there. So, you know, maybe two million. I'm, I'm completely guessing.
Educated non-arts guy, why does the stage have to be four thousand square feet?
'Cause they told me it was gonna be four thousand square feet.
Who?
School system and other benchmarks, you know, we, we use other benchmarks, but yeah.
How big is, how big is the Lafayette High, um, stage?
Small.
That I don't know, but one of the problems with this side of the stage is brick walls.
Right, I, I know. Does anyone know how big Hyman Performing Arts stage is? Is that four thousand square feet?
It's close to that, it's gotta be, yeah.
Okay. And I-
That's a big stage.
I have three more quick questions. And then you guys can proceed with the presentation. The relocation of the baseball field, anybody can speak to that? I'm just curious.
I think that was in option one.
Yeah, it was a, it was a, there were a couple of different options for the auditorium itself that the facilities committee saw. And one of them was building the auditorium where the baseball field is and then putting the baseball field on the corner of Student and Marshall. Is that Marshall right there?
Okay. Why would that, why does that cost half zero? I just wanna consider that.
Well, no, 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 no. It had, if you look at, if you look on the right, it says four hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
I think the two columns, the columns right says zero of the square footage for the other pieces of the-
And I don't think that option was selected. I think when we went option two, we left it alone, which was a good move.
Dr. Roban, and, and I make sure to say doctor, you know, I won't mess that up. The average attendance at, at your performances, if you could take a guess like a max and min or even a median?
Depends on what the-
They can't hear, they can't, they can't, they can't hear you. That'll help me make a decision. I really would like to know what's the maximum amount you guys have performed for?
Sure. It, it depends on this, on what particular group is doing it. And so if you imagine that the band has three hundred, you know, fifty kids in it and they bring two parents to the concert, you're looking at seven hundred kids if they don't bring friends. So when the marching, well, when the marching, sorry, Scotty. Uh, when the, uh, the wind ensemble plays or the choir, which has two hundred and thirty, two hundred and fifty people a year and do the fall show, they're booked at capacity. You know, piano, um, you know, maybe three hundred, strings, three hundred, something like that. One of the things we had looked into doing, you know, before the movement, something I think we're doing is more collaboration where we would have, for instance, like an- entire performing academy sort of recital, where we would have the dancers and the orchestra play and all that. And so, then you would be pulling from all of the different disciplines, parents and mamas and grandparents. So, you know, some of us, because, you know, I have like 68 students, so I might have 150, 200 show, but with, when you have a, you know, the band with 300 kids, then you fill it up. So, it just depends on sort of wherever you see as the board, what you would like the total capacity of the performing arts academy to be, how large that y'all feel you want it, and that would inform the size of the auditorium, depending on the size that you want that program to grow to. You know, if you have a number in your mind, I want this many people in the program. Most acoustical guides say you should have your entire freshman class for high school, however, whatever the size of your freshman class is should be your size for your auditorium. But I don't know what that is.
I heard you, I heard you make that comment last month. What's the logic behind that?
Well, you would, if you're going to do an in-school performance or any sort of thing, then the largest group of kids you would have in there would be the freshman class, which is always the largest. So, if you're gonna, say, treat the kids, because they all had good grades, to a performance of Charlie Brown during school, because we have the hour to give, then you would be able to have the whole freshman class come instead of having to break it up and lose more instructional minutes.
And my last question would be, and someone can, and I heard the numbers tossed out, but there were two missing, the seating capacity for Moss Prep, Lafayette Highman and ACA. What was ACA and Hyman again?
300 and 2200, Lafayette High's 800, Lafayette Middle's 700.
ACA's 300?
Yeah.
What was Hyman again?
2200. Hyman's enormous.
Okay. And Lafayette High is?
800.
800. And Moss Prep?
Don't know Moss Prep. It's smaller than Lafayette Middle, though, I believe.
Anybody know Moss Prep? That's a tough question, that's okay. I'll go past it.
Does Moss Prep have a balcony?
Yeah, they, yeah, it's fancy.
Yeah, I think it's the same auditorium as Lafayette Middle, then.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
It seems, it seems smaller. I don't know if they changed the capacity when they renovated it a couple of years I tend to agree with Dr. Chassault on the options. I don't know that, I mean, I'd like to take all this information personally and try to come up with a number that, that I'm comfortable with on cost and then kinda ask you guys to show us what fits the needs. You know, Dr. Aguilar, you're, you're very aware of the needs of performing arts, and I know Dr. Robin's very aware of the needs of the performing arts and the day to the operation of the academy. And after we hear Mr. Guidry's presentation, I'd like to have a little bit of a discussion on, you know, do we, do we wanna try to fund both projects? Do we? I don't think neither is, is, is gonna have much traction, but, you know, at the same time, I don't know that 12 has much, much traction. And I think there's probably some happy medium of what can we do towards both projects? Because Mr. Crozier's point that once you build the auditorium itself, that's it, right? You can always come back and add support later or something like that, but once you make your decision on capacity, that's that. And then, you know, we, I'd certainly like to give you guys guidance on cost or budget and have you come back and say, okay, here's what we, here's where we feel we get the most bang for our bucks. So, if you have questions, go ahead.
Yes, my concern is we debating whether we do 5, 6, 7 or 800. If the growth is as we think it's going to be, then we get back from five or six years later and wanna try to add two, it's probably double the cost of what we paying now. I'm not a performing arts person, don't know what it contains to make it successful, but I'm one to, to say that if we're gonna do it right, we do it right the first time. Trying to save a dollar here or there would not help our cause down the line. Maybe cut back on some of the goodies that it, that it offers, I don't know, I don't know anything about it. But my thing is in trying to find the best solution, if we're gonna do it, make sure it's done right. If we got a rental capacity of 800, maybe we might take in an income, pay for itself over the cost of X amount of years.
I don't think there's enough days in the year to pay for itself, I'd have written it out.
But it's rather expensive to rent an auditorium, really. It's rather expensive, catch us some of our money. But if we are gonna do it, and I'm not saying I agree with spending the money or not, but I'm in one to do it right the first time and not to, not to try to put a Band-Aid on it now and have an incision from age operation later.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Mr. Guidry, would you like to?
Yes. Prior to considering the performing arts auditorium or instructional spaces, we're at 126 million, if you recall, total projects on the project listing. And at that, at that point, at the 126 million dollar level, we're looking at about 15.7 million for Milton, when it originally was listed at 19 million. We're looking at about 4.3 million for the plantation wing, when it was listed, originally listed at 11 million. So, having said that, that's our starting point. We can add, or we have the capacity for approximately an additional 13 million dollars of bond proceeds to bring us to 139 million. So, taking each, each phase separately, just to sort of give us some reference points. If we look at the instructional spaces first and at an estimated cost of 6 million, that leaves us with an additional 7 million that can be allocated back to both the Milton project and the plantation project. So, if we allocated that 7 million pro rata, it would bring the Milton project back up to about 18 million dollars and it would bring the plantation project up to about 8.9 million dollars. I'm presenting it in that, in this way because it'll, our starting point's at 126, we have 13 million, so along the same lines or using that same approach. If we look at the auditorium, which is the second schedule that's presented, again, starting with the 13 million of bond proceeds, additional bond proceeds that's available, 12 million would go to the, assuming, and assuming 12 million would go to the performing arts auditorium. That would leave us with a million to be allocated back to Milton and plantation. That would leave the Milton or increase the Milton project to right at 16 million and it would increase the plantation project back up to about 4.9 million. That just sort of gives us some reference points. But in total, you add the 12 and the 6 together and you come up to 18 million, without adjusting any of the other, the scopes of any of the other projects, we're looking at an additional 13 million in proceeds. So, if we left everything as is, the bonding capacity would not be adequate to cover both projects at their current scopes. If they were reduced in size, perhaps auditorium, based on the discussions you were having, then, you know, the scenario may be different to where they both could possibly be done. But at their current scopes or current estimated costs, the additional bonding capacity would not be adequate to do both. Just a, just a point of information.
Thank you. Just to make sure everyone is clear on this, would you please explain where the 13 million additional bonding proceeds came from?
The 13 million dollars of additional bond proceeds, it's a combination of a few things. One was the USDA funding and the fact that the interest rate, that the reduction in the interest rate basically reduced the needed debt service. That's, that is one of the items. And the second is, as some of our debt, our current, our existing debt matures, some of the reserve requirements go away. They're no longer required. You have new reserve requirements that kick in. So, that's, that's something that we looked at when we, when we projected out and looked one, two years down the road in terms of, okay, we have additional debt to sell, how is all this gonna, gonna work? Because it's all sort of intertwined in terms of, depending on how much we borrow and what types, and what type of tax we use to, to fund USDA has an impact on what's available to fund, you know, how much remains of property tax, which mean, which then leaves us with sales tax. So, it's all, it's all an inner working. So, we started, after we were well underway with the USDA project, to take a look at all of that at the same time. And that's where the differences in the reserves created some additional bonding capacity and the lower interest rate did as well. We also asked the, the firm that was assisting us with the amortization schedules to sort of push some of it back. If you remember, well, it was at the facilities committee meeting, I don't know if you were in attendance, but we, we showed the debt service in bar graph form and we asked them to add as much capacity as they could without basically tying our hands for an extended period of time. So, their response was, as I mentioned, to take a look at the reserves, but also to push some of the maturities back to where this would basically take us forward about eight years before we'd have any significant additional bonding capacity. But it still leaves some minimal bonding capacity in the next few years when our, when our current debt service drops off. So, it was a combination of those items, pushing some of the maturities back a little, extending them out a little, the change in the reserves and the borrowing from USDA.
Thank you, Mr. Guidry. You guys have any other? Is anyone in the audience besides Mr. Crozier and Dr. Robin? Mr. Domain, do you have anything to? Okay. It sounds, it sounds to me, and certainly guys, correct me if I'm wrong, that I think we might wanna see, see it broken, maybe phase one, phase two is a little, a little too simple for this in that, you know, to Dr. Chassault's point, I'd certainly like to see a, excuse me, a 400, a 500, a 600. You know, what is, what does that do to the price? You know, we can certainly see what the curve does as we reduce the, reduce the seating capacity. What does it do if we, if we decide to forego some of the support areas at first or move that as a phase two as opposed to, you know, doing the classrooms and then trying to do the auditorium? So, I don't know what, I mean, does that satisfy what you'd like to see as a result of this conversation?
Yes, it does. And as well, I just wanna be clear, I know I started to hear, the recommendation from staff would be to use existing facilities for the time being and then build the, excuse me, use existing facilities, Moss Prep, Lafayette High, and then build the, not then, and build the instructional.
That was definitely the, the kinda group consensus at the facilities committee was if, if we were forced to choose the order of the, of the projects, that their feeling was the instructional facilities would be first if you had to choose. So, what we're, I think, saying now is diving a little deeper and saying, okay, is there a way that we can do both if we scale it back? You know, if we change the scope of each individual project, is there a way that we can do both or, you know, what are our options along those lines? Because I, I certainly believe if we're ever gonna build the auditorium, we're probably gonna build it now. You know, this is a difficult conversation to start up again three years from now, four years from now. So, anyway, do you have something to say, sir?
Yes, sir. If you don't, if you don't mind, the facilities committee just met earlier today and heard a presentation from Mark Spiller with the architect for Milton. So, that budget was reduced from 19 million down to 15.6 million dollars. He showed the facilities committee what impact that has on the overall scope of the project. The original plans were to not only remove all of the temporary buildings, which still can be done with the 15.6 budget, however, we lose the additional classroom space so badly needed for Milton Elementary School by reducing the budget down to 15.6. We also have been, we have been discussing the plantation wing. It's been in, it's been out, it's been cut, it's, and whatnot. I would just urge you to try to use our available bonding capacity to maximize the number of projects that we can complete without going to the voters for additional monies. We need the 18 million dollars for Milton. We need at least the 9 million dollars for plantation and we likely need some instructional areas for PAA. So, from my perspective, I'll be happy to work with our good people helping us, we can bring back some numbers, but I think the sweet spot for, for the district is 6 million dollars of capacity for something.
Thank you, Dr. Aguilar. That reminded me of another question or half question, half comment that I wanted to make earlier. What is this with 18, is it 19.6 or 8? What did you say for Milton was currently?
15 million six.
No, no, the, like, I know you said you needed 19, right? Like, that's what.
That was the original budget, 19 million dollars.
Well, how do, how confident do we feel in the 26 for Katherine Drexel? And the project at Milton, is it essentially a new, like, I know it's a wing or a, you know, whatever you wanna term it, it's a lot of classrooms.
It's a lot of classrooms. Actually, I asked Mr. Domain to bring us shortly an estimate of the construction cost. We wanna see if we're still good with that 26 million dollars.
Where did the 26 come from? That is a good question, right? Like, that, did that come from any architects?
It actually came from, from a worksheet Sandra Billado worked on using an average square footage cost and looking at the number of students and generating an expected cost for the project.
Okay, all right. Yes, I think that would be good to have that because, you know, my fear here is that, you know, the, the, underest, maybe not underestimation, but, you know, I remember when Milton was nine and plantation was nine and, and Drexel was 32 and whatever else. And certainly, we've gotten new information because we haven't built much in recent years. But if Milton's 19, then I have, I have, I fear for the Drexel project, that it would come, come in far over the 26 and then we're, we're gonna be up against it. So, Mr. Hidalgo, do you have a comment to make?
Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to say regarding the plantation project. I know how the superintendent feels about it, we appreciate that. But the plantation project unfortunately has always been kinda the, the sacrifice, if you will, for the other projects. And the reason is because the other projects were just prioritized a little higher through the facilities committee and actually through the board. I don't remember the 9 million dollar Milton budget. I do remember having conversations about wing expansion being 9 million dollars. That's not what's happening at Milton because that's not what's needed. And I also wanted to add to what the superintendent said, the difference in cost from the original 19 million dollar, not the original, but from the 19 million dollar budget to 15.6, in addition to many other things, is over 8,000 square feet of space, of classroom space. So, you know, the idea discussed here tonight at the facilities committee meeting and all along is the need to not only get rid of Butler Buildings in the parish, but because we need to increase the capacity at Milton, that's why we're proposing the route we were. The idea is to increase in capacity. Again, Milton Elementary, it's Milton Middle Elementary. It's, it's two campuses essentially in one and we realize that there is a cap that has to be put on it and that was 1,200 students. that there is a cap that has to be put on it, and that was 1,200 students. If we reduce that budget significantly, like we're talking about, we're completely losing the focus of the project to increase capacity. And so unfortunately, plantation has always kind of been out there on the wing. And unfortunately, I believe that a beautiful auditorium at Como is, is a great, is a wonderful idea. But having, meeting our capacity issues throughout the parish, especially where we know the need is, okay? That's why we're building facilities in, in the south side of the parish. That's where the need is. That certainly is, is more important to me. And so I would just ask you, as the superintendent said, to please keep that in mind when we're talking about an auditorium. And then we're looking at a project like Milton and saying, well, we're going to go ahead and cut back that, that, that capacity there. Unfortunately, I believe that we're working backwards if we do that. And so I'm just asking you to keep that in mind. We're talking about a significant cut to Milton. Essentially, all of the increase, which was the most important idea behind the project as it's, as it's planned out.
Thank you, miss. One second. Just so nobody thinks he's just advocating for Milton. Where'd you go to elementary school?
Now, why are you going to ask that?
No, well, I got a second question for you after you answer that.
What's at Milton Elementary School?
Where'd you go to high school?
Como.
See? See, he's not, he's not, he's-
Thank you, Mrs. Centani.
He's for Como too, everyone. All right. Do we have, do we have anything else? I mean, can, do you need us to, to vote to ask you guys to come back with this, Dr. Aguar? Do you feel like you have the information you need for what we're kind of looking for? Certainly you're welcome to ask me, ask us any questions to clarify.
So I think there's some, I don't want to use the word time sensitive items here, but we do need to get straight on the Milton budget. The architects are working and they're engaged. And I think we do need, we need you to be comfortable with making sure you're using the funds wisely. Ideally, you would make a decision and refer this to the full board. We, we have this on the agenda for tomorrow night as an action item.
I think, I, I think the key part of this, at least in my mind, is to have a, a better or an updated number on Drexel, right? Because that changes everything. If, if 26 is still a good number, then that gives us a lot of clarity. But if, 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 if Drexel comes back at 30, that, that changes a lot from where we'd like to go. So do, do you feel like we would be able to have, you know, kind of an updated estimate for next month or later this month if, if you need us to move this, move this down the pipeline?
Yes, sir. Just as soon as we receive an, an update. And just to be clear, we are deliberately not moving on plantation, using it as the la, lowest priority. So Katherine Drexel is one of those projects that needs to be completed. We do have a contingency of 2 million dollars in this budget. So I want to assure you that Katherine Drexel will be built. And just the idea that Milton is a middle school and an elementary school, and we're spending 18 million dollars to refurbish it, it, the cost should be a little bit less if we're building just an elementary school as Katherine Drexel would be. So we may come in at, at a good, safe number with that, with that budget.
Well, that would be wonderful news. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Does anyone in the audience have anything to add to this conversation? All right, Ms. Allen, I was waiting for you.
I was getting a little bit when I was here.
Well, that's good. It's the nicest thing anybody's told me today.
But listening to y'all conversation, when y'all talk about building the auditorium on the baseball field, so you're going to have to move the baseball field and put someone else, somewhere else. When is that going to get done if that is the scenario? And how much will that cost?
Well, they had, there's $450,000 in the document on the agenda there. And Mr. Crozier said that that kind of, they went a different direction in the facilities discussion aspect of it, that they said that probably wouldn't be the best thing to do. So I think what we've been discussing tonight-
So that's off the table?
I mean, I wouldn't say it's off the table, but it's certainly not been the direction that the discussion has taken. You know, I think what we've been discussing tonight is building it on the corner of Student, Student Drive and Marshall, I think is the-
Well, y'all did mention putting it on the baseball field. Y'all talked about it so many things. Does the board have something on the website that the public can view to show a timeline of what y'all are planning on doing? I know there's information in the financial section, but something easy for the laypeople here?
You mean just the-
Just something simple.
Construction timeline?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know. Dr. Aguar, do we have something like that?
Uh, no, we don't. But that's a great idea.
I would appreciate it.
All, all we have approved at this point is South Side High School. And, and we've got some information there. And we're looking for property for Katherine Drexel. We've got an architect working on Milton. That's, but we can definitely provide a site to show you what we're doing.
If you go on our website, you can see drone footage of South Side High School.
I saw one tonight at the meeting earlier too.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Yes, it was. Yeah, I would include, like, y'all talked about a lot of things tonight that I wasn't aware of and stuff. So just y'all thoughts about future things, like where y'all going to put new buildings and stuff. But I haven't heard y'all talk about a maintenance fund to take care of the buildings that, these beautiful buildings that y'all going to be building for us. So that's important to the public. It sure is to me because that's one of the things that was not taken care of or funded properly. And here we are in the, you know, the state that we are in because of lack of funds to maintain what we build. And funds is, I know it's very tight right now, but it's very important. And I haven't heard anything. And I would really like, you know, that to be worked on and addressed and put some money aside.
In our, in our budget process, we put, I believe Mr. Guidry can correct me if I'm wrong, two and a half million dollars annually into our capital improvements fund.
Capital improve-
Capital improvements Fund. I apologize for constantly clearing my throat tonight. Put two and a half million dollars a year in our capital improvements fund to try to clear out the backlog of deferred maintenance. And that's, that's why you'll see, if you go look at our capital improvements budget, you'll see a number of schools getting HVAC replacements, you know, roof air conditioners, things of that nature that haven't been taken care of over the years. So that's the way we, we're trying to knock out the deferred maintenance. And then if you think back to the tax proposal that we had, that we eventually pulled off the ballot, we did have a portion of that tax dedicated to maintenance of facilities. And so much, I agree with you very, very much that one of the problems is that we, we got money to build it. We didn't get money to take care of it.
But y'all are putting money aside now-
Yes, ma'am.
-to take care of all, not just the new buildings, but all of the other ones that are in need of repair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Y'all are working hard and y'all are doing a great job. And, you know, we do appreciate everything that y'all are doing for us and our children.
I changed my mind. That's the nicest thing anyone's told me.
You're funny.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
All right.
Anyone else? All right. Dr. Chasson, one last.
Can I have everybody's attention in here? Everybody. Keep something in mind. And this is, this is where I get this little internal rumbling. I want to and will give what we need for the kids, but we can't let it border on wants. Now, please understand where I'm coming from here. Cause it's easy to say, well, no, he's, no, he's griping. But in keeping in mind, when I, when I heard the question asked about, well, where'd you go to high school? If somebody asked me that, I would say Nardside, but we're at 51% capacity. And there's a ton of money going to a particular side of town. Now, we're not going to start that debate about South Side versus Nardside, but a ton of money going in that direction. Middle school, NP Moss is closed. Ask me where I went to elementary school. Anybody toss it out there?
Myrtle Place.
Vermillion Elementary, which is also now closed, which is next to a waste plant. So keep in mind that needs, not wants, because we have to fight for a lot of our needs on this side of town in District Three and Four. But just keep that in mind whenever we're going about this process, please. Not to rain on anyone's parade, whatever we need, I'm going to support it. But just keep that in mind throughout this entire process. My entire lineage is of going through school and God Paul Bros still there. My schools are closing on my side of town. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Chasson. Item number two on the agenda is the approved proposal recommendation for garbage collection and recycling services, RFP number 22-16. Mr. Bordal, I assume.
Thank you, Mr. Centani. I've been told I'm the designated, designated quarterback on this one. We put out an RFP, request for proposals for garbage collection and recycling services. The, a committee was formed, excuse me, let me back up a second. The RFP was worked up where we tried very hard to make the, make it objective to, for the scoring. We put it out, got the responses back from four different companies. The committee was assembled and the committee was given the score sheets and the grades were tallied. As stated in the public content of this agenda item, a company called Waste Connections Incorporated had the highest number of points. However, their fees in total for the, for the yearly fees were greater than the funds that we currently have budgeted. So we checked with legal counsel and in accordance with Section 1.8 rejection of proposals of the RFP, we rejected their proposal because it was over the budgeted funds. We then went to the second highest scoring proposer, which was Waste Management. Sorry, I've lost my place here. Wait, yeah, Waste Management. So they were the second highest scoring proposer and their annual fees were within the range that we have budgeted for garbage collection services. So therefore, based on that information, the committee, the, that was assembled is recommending to the finance committee to reject the proposal of Waste Connections and to accept the proposal of Waste Management and enter into a contract for the garbage collection services and a recycling pilot program with up to a maximum of 10 school sites initially. Any questions?
No, but I know a couple of ladies who do have questions. So you may want to take a seat right there.
You may ask a question.
Oh, Mr. Broussard had a question.
I'm sorry. Mr. Bordal.
Yes, sir.
In looking at the prices, it's based on 52 weeks pickup. And I know that's in there. We've got 40 weeks of school, something like-
Approximately.
Do, do the price change? I know that's in the contract, it says that weekly pick, I mean, whenever we pick up, be charged by weekly. Do the price change from, for instance, 46, $46 per week, per pickup? Would it go up if we don't use the 52 weeks that, that he calculated in there?
No, sir. These prices are locked in. And we did make it clear that we have the option to reduce the number of pickups at schools during holidays and summer break, which we do on a regular basis. Like, for example, during the summer, we find out which school are having a summer program, like summer school or summer feeding, and we'll keep those sites at three pickups per week. But at the other sites that have just nothing going on, except the custodial crew is there cleaning, we'll reduce those back to once per week, just to make sure that whatever gets thrown out gets picked up on a weekly basis. So the, the proposal that you have is for three times, three times a week pickup for every week of the year. So what will actually happen is it'll come in a little less than that because we will reduce the number of pickups on holidays and over the summertime. But we have to use that as a basis of, of, of where to price it out at.
Ms. Como, Ms. Waddle? I think most of their questions are going to center on the recycling aspect of the RFP.
Yes, it will. And I'd like to say that we typically don't look to the trash can to make an impact on education. But I believe by approving this contract that is diversifying your handling of a waste as a school system will definitely have an impact on the education of our children. Several of your schools volunteered, I believe it was three years ago, Kyle, your contract included an option for recycling for some of the schools. And, you know, through teacher dedication or school support, some of the schools, Northside High was one of them, was able to continue to recycle. But our questions concerning the Waste Management proposal, they, in your RFP, you had requested for 96 gallon rollable carts at each site that would be participating in the recycling program. The carts would be beneficial in the success of the program, but I did not see in Waste Management's proposal if they were going to be providing those carts.
I don't have that RFP with, I don't have their, have their response.
While they're looking up that information, a, another question, and this might be for the school board members or, or finance committee, both. What is the commitment from you in expanding this program? It, it's not evident in the contract. When they extrapolate the prices for the five years that the contract is listed for, they do not adjust their per recycling bin fee for more than just five schools. And I understand how the recycling program has grown at UL, according to Gretchen Vanacore, who handles that program. They have seen a cost reduction per recycling bin emptied when they increased the program. They were suffering in their recycling program when it was a smaller program. As they grew it, they saw a cost reduction in their overall waste management. That is not reflected in this contract, though.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm committed to cost reduction. I mean, that's, that's always an attractive option there is, is cost reduction. I think the-
The proposal, excuse me.
Yeah, the, the request included a small number of school sites to start off with because it's very difficult in an, in an organization our size to produce a culture change.
Yes. And I, and I trust your judgment on that. It, it sounds very-
Right. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's always good to, to start small and see how it works out. And then if you can justify, I mean, maybe popularity, hopefully popularity, everybody wanting to take part will, will, will drive the change here. But-
But two, what, what we know from learning about the business of recycling is that there has to be, first off, the commitment from the top and second off, the commitment to expand the program so that the numbers work for these companies that are handling recyclables.
Outside of, outside of supporting the recycling program, I don't think we've, we've have a future commitment to expand it. But it would be my great hope that we would expand it. I mean, I, I hope that it, it functions as we intend and as we hope it functions so that the children are, as the elementary school children move into middle school, they want to know why their middle school isn't recycling.
Right. Well, what I'm telling you is that in the, in the request for proposal that was written by the school board or the, by Lee Francis, that there is the language of the desire to grow it. However, what I'm saying is your proposal that you are going to approve tonight from Waste Management does not reflect that growth, at least not in the five years of this contract.
It doesn't reflect that three years from now, we want to add another five? It doesn't reflect that three years from now, we want to add another five, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, so Kyle, do we have the ability to amend this? Like, if we went to them and said, "We want to add another five", I mean, is that something we can do without a great deal of ethical exposure as far as rebidding and things like that?
And to clarify, your RFP asked for five. It sounds like Waste Management has proposed accepting up to ten. Is that correct or was that a misspeak?
That is just a recommendation made by the committee. To do up to ten.
Okay, though the request for proposal has asked for numbers based on five.
Correct, but the recommendation by the committee is to do up to ten schools instead of five.
Okay.
Which we would think that you would be fooled.
Yes, 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 but I understand the pricing. I don't understand how you would be asking for more services and Waste Management gave you pricing for, I guess I'm just not... I, can anyone, can you understand that better? What I'm trying to say, I...
Mr. Gidry?
So, let's be clear, the RFP mentioned five. The recommendation from the review committee recommended ten. That's twenty-five percent of our schools.
Yes, yes.
If we see a real, honest need and a desire for more schools, more than ten, to participate in a recycling program, and we would want all forty schools to participate. We would want our waste stream to diminish. There is a per-school cost for recycling. This board, this finance committee, the full board, would need to budget the necessary funds for a hundred percent participation in the recycling program. But we want to start with ten. We have the language in place. If we need twelve, we'll contact the contractor and we'll negotiate that additional cost. If we want fifteen or twenty, keep in mind, we're gonna be reducing the cost, the overall cost, when we're not picking up during holidays, not picking up at sites when they're not in summer session. So, I think there's a commitment from this board, through this RFP, to really push and engage a recycling program. If we reduce the waste stream, we reduce the size of the containers needed, we save money on that end as well.
Correct, correct.
Right, and that is one of our questions also, is, Mr. Borlon, are you prepared to kind of keep tabs on the solid waste dumpsters at those ten schools to see if there's a reduction in solid waste to maybe reduce the pickups or take away the smaller container and just keep the larger one? And then have a recycle container is...
Or does Waste Management handle that through their right sizing program or their school audit program that apparently is offered? I don't know if that's an additional fee, those audits or the monitoring?
Right, so therefore, the school board would save money, the school system would save money in solid waste pickups.
I believe, and it's been a couple of weeks since I looked at this information, but...
There's the right sizing program mentioned and the school audits just below. It's unclear whether or not the services are at additional cost to the school.
Well, they do not submit an extra cost on that. So everything is supposed to be included in their per dump charges. I'm just glancing over some of the information. They have something regarding onboard computing, which I'm kind of hopeful will be a weight, they'll be able to track the weights.
Yardage, yardage per customer, they're able to...
Either weights or yardage. Am I prepared to go out and measure each dumpster? No, I'm not, so...
You don't have anything else to do?
Yeah, well, just a couple of things. But we could, we could track it, I believe, through whatever their system is for tracking weight. And just as Dr. Agalord said, as you move products from the regular waste stream to the recycling stream, you're gonna, you have the very likely possibility of reducing how much goes into the regular garbage stream. I mean, our big producer is the cafeteria, so that has to go into the regular garbage stream. But if we divert a lot of paper and cardboard, and those dumpsters are scheduled to get picked up once a week, but it could be a matter that we may divert so much that we could reduce from two regular dumpsters and one recycling, where we may have to have two recycling dumpsters and one regular garbage dumpster. That's a possibility that could happen. As the schools get more in tuned and into the recycling program, that's a very good possibility. I'm noticing that their price on a recycling dumpster is thirty-five dollars per six-yard dump. And that's on recycling. And on regular garbage, their six-yard price is forty-six dollars and fourteen cents. So, we would be saving almost nine, ten dollars per dump.
That's good, that's good. That's good. I like that, no, seriously. That is, that is the way that you expand the program. Not to, not to say that recycling isn't admirable in and of itself.
No, it should work out number-wise. We're throwing away commodities right now and we don't need to be throwing away commodities. How can we, as volunteers, help to grow this program?
What we will recommend is that, or at least hopefully we will recommend, is that we approve this proposal and direct the superintendent to come up with a plan for implementation. So that, I know one of the questions you asked was very good, is, are we prepared to start the implementation of recycling immediately? When does this contract go into effect when we approve it? Mr. Borlon?
First of September.
First of September. So, are we, are we still on the hook for the cost of the school sites? Or do we, are we on the hook as the school sites receive their recycling bins? Like, I guess that, so, do we pay for the recycling service if there's no recycling bin to pick up?
No, we don't.
Okay, so we can add, for instance, I would imagine Woodvale is probably ready tomorrow.
Yes.
You can put the recycling bin at Woodvale and they're gonna start filling it up, correct?
Yes, there's paper there now to be...
Yeah, I know you guys go and pick it up and bring it wherever you can bring it, I don't know, but... What's that?
We've been sneaking it in your bin at night.
Yeah, I know. You can, you can put it in my bin, my bin's never full. No, so, we can take a school that's ready and start them on September one, yes? And we're still only paying for one or two schools, however many we, and then we can enroll more and incur that cost at that time, and that was one of my concerns.
Well, initially, I think we're gonna have a little bit of extra cost because, for example, Woodvale's got two regular garbage bins. And so we'll have to park a recycling bin next to that and monitor the situation. And as their recycling program grows and we see that when it gets down to the point where we only have a need for one regular garbage bin and one recycle bin, then we call up whoever the contractor is and say, "Hey, take away one regular and put the recycle bin next to the regular."
So does that, I mean, not, having the superintendent direct the implementation, certainly it would not be him personally, but I would imagine that he would form some kind of group of employees who are responsible for enrolling the school or possibly even coming up. Hopefully, a parent committee of some sort could come up with promotional materials. I know...
And I know we have seated here Lisa Mahoney with Lafayette Consolidated Government and there's the position in your office that sole purpose is to go into our school system and educate the students about recycling, which is difficult to do when the schools do not recycle. So I'm very thankful that this is being considered as being accepted.
Well, can we count, can we count on you guys to work with the superintendent to come up with an implementation plan?
Yes.
Yeah, we can?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Yes.
She says yes.
Sure, go ahead, Dr. Chassot.
By, we're at the central office. Are we recycling here? I think I know the answer to that question.
Cardboard only.
Yeah, we do have one cardboard-only dumpster by the warehouse.
Let me see how to phrase this question properly, and I don't know who to direct it to. How do we, how do we begin with central office? I went into an office recently and I just noticed tons of paper in a trash can and I just thought to myself, gee, where's that going? So I actually asked, I said, "Do we recycle?" And the answer was no. And I really would like to, actually, it's surprising this is coming up because this occurred maybe about a month and a half ago when I came to fact something. So, how would we start that process at the central office?
Well, off the cuff, Dr. Chassot, is, would be to get some of these rolling carts, like the blue carts you see at residences, and hopefully park a few of those around the central office and send out memos encouraging everyone to put their wastepaper, walk down the hall twice a week or whatever it takes, once a day, and kind of like that stack.
I refuse to throw, I apologize for interrupting you. I just refuse to throw it away. I've had, I've had the use for it and I just refuse to put it, no, guys, that's, that's, I've got some underneath my desk as well. I just refuse to get rid of it because I'm passionate about recycling. Like, you struck a chord here, so I understand...
I'm telling you right now, you give this to those two ladies, it's gonna get recycled.
They're gonna take care of it because I think, I think we do waste a lot of paper
and we could probably save a lot of money, but as well... You just remind me of the Pink Panther, like I see a shadow slowly crossing recycling bins. Who picks those up for us? Would they graciously, I mean, they may be making a whole lot of money with, with our school system, with this contract. You think they would graciously pick up central office for us?
Sure, I mean, whatever campus we set up with these five to ten pilots, I mean, whoever we set up, they would pick up.
Well, with the exclusion, I'd like the ten schools to have those because it's more important there. I think the adults can probably monitor and police themselves a little bit more. But I'm pretty sure they would pick it up if we just simply asked them. I'm sure they're making a whole lot of money with this, so just one extra stop for picking up because we would like to do a pilot program at the central office as well.
We can ask.
I appreciate it. I'm gonna follow up with you, Kyle. I appreciate it.
So nicely.
I have a question, is shredded paper recyclable?
Yes, very much so.
Because we've got a lot of bags that we can start recycling.
We, at Walmart, we have to bag it and, yes, there's...
And we have to shred most things because it's personally identifiable information, but we have tons of bags of shredded paper we can start recycling.
Yes.
And I know I told you guys before the, before the meeting started that I, in exceptionally rare circumstances, will go and tell a principal that his or her school has to recycle. You know, I'd much rather them decide because you'll get much greater buy-in. We can tell them what to do, all day long. That's right, huh? We can, we can tell the adults in this building to recycle the paper, so. That would be great if we could get that, get the central office added as a site.
Wonderful idea.
Okay, so I have another question. The, so if this goes to Waste Management and those ten schools get, each get a six-yard container for recyclables, are the schools gonna be asked to please recycle everything recyclable? So they'll take any kinds of paper, cardboard, steel and metals and plastics. Are the schools gonna be encouraged to get all of those items, even if it's phased in? Paper and cardboard boxes are the easiest, of course, because we've already been doing that. But to get everything recyclable out of the solid waste and into the recycle containers because that will overall save money?
I think one of the things that we could do is, what was the difference in cost between solid waste and recycle bin?
Thirty-five for recycle, forty-six for regular garbage.
And that's per pickup, correct?
Yes. Part of their response, they have a complimentary recycle rally program where the education part, they state that the program provides an educational and curriculum resource around recycling and opportunities for interactive learning. Students are encouraged to collect as many non-alcoholic beverage containers, plastic bottles and aluminum cans as possible. And they say that incentives include scanned cans and bottles, provide schools with a chance to earn points redeemable for Amazon gift cards, laptops, iPads or rewards from local businesses.
I'll do you one better, you know, if you were able to demonstrate, and this might be a little bit of work for whoever's in charge of this, but if, if we're really legitimately able to reduce costs at a school site, I would be, I would be willing, if it's possible for us to do this, I don't know if it's possible, but willing to share that savings, some percentage for a campus party or something like that. If you would like to incentivize our schools to do a good job recycling, we could turn this into a giant contest because they do better, we save more. I mean, this is, there's no better incentive in my mind than that. So, I would be in favor or supportive of some kind of proposal to do such a thing, but I would leave that to the people who want to implement this program.
You're gonna have to wrestle that chick out of Mr. Gidry's hands.
That's fine, that's fine.
He's smiling.
I'm taller than him. You ladies have any other questions or comments?
About five thousand, but...
Thank you very much, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Borlon.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Yes, yes, sir.
First of all, I'm Charles Wyatt and I'm president of the Bayou Vermillion Preservation Association. And I would like to compliment you people on your actions right now. But I think there's some other points that I wanted to bring up in regard to the future because a comment was made at the, during the discussion that if the children in the elementary schools are taught to recycle and they get to the middle school, what's gonna happen? And along that line, they mentioned about Lisa at LCG working with the school and education program. We at Bayou Vermillion Preservation, our mission is to teach the community, excuse me, children and adults that anything that is thrown into the street for one way or the other ends up in the cooley. So, we are trying to work with the school system and trying to educate the children. Also, Bayou Vermillion District is working with the children. And one additional thing, that the Keep Louisiana Beautiful has just created a curriculum for K through five on the difficulties of trash and trash removal. And being Keep Louisiana Beautiful, this will be distributed throughout the entire state of Louisiana. At, last time I talked to Susan Russell, that the document was at the printers and will be released next month at their annual convention. So I bring this to the attention because the immediate contract is short-term, but you have to look at the expansion because there are a lot of other volunteer organizations that are working, you know, along the same line. And if we can get the children to do it, I figure this is a two-generation project. If we can get the children to do it, little Billy will, his dad's driving a pickup truck and the styrofoam cup goes out, the thing, into the street, into the storm drain, into the cooley and ultimately the river. And when Billy gets older, then maybe he will have taught his dad not to throw it. And as a teenager, he can work with it. But just as importantly, when he becomes a parent, then his children will not throw. So, this may be a two-generation project. And if you can look back on seat belts, everybody, you know, fought seat belts. And then after seat belts, he had car seats. Everybody thought that. And now how many times are the children say, "Dad, you didn't buckle up"? And I see you shaking your head. And hopefully, that's what we're gonna try and do in regard to trash. And I compliment these two ladies for doing what they're doing. I don't know whether anybody calculated, but she took their Woodvale and figured out trash per student. And then I took the, what I, the best I could do to determine the number of elementary school students. And based upon cups per student, there are gonna be over two million styrofoam cups or milk containers just in the elementary school. Two million milk containers, all of which are recyclable. Now, if you take that and go to the middle school and then the full school, you're up to almost five million milk containers or plastic containers within just LPSS. And that's an awful lot of recyclable. and that's an awful lot of recyclable. So, you're to be commended, but don't stop with just five. Plan on expanding because that's gonna happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Don't be shy. If you have something to say, walk up to the podium.
I'll definitely keep it quick because it sounds like y'all are all moving in the right direction, and the best thing about our educational system is we have research and development that has been going on for many and many years, so the technology to actually reduce our waste stream is actually here. So, I've been doing a lot of research and been doing my homework on trying to solve the problem of how do we deal with the food waste because that is your number-one waste at your school system. That's the reason why you have to dump three times a week is because you have food waste in those dumpsters, and it has to leave. So, I've been doing some research. There was this, there's this program in Florida, they were actually doing some composting of food waste. Unfortunately, while composting the food waste, you still have to add your carbon element to boost your carbon and nitrogen levels, and you still have to deal with the actual transportation of that food waste. And the guy that I actually spoke with him today, he actually turned me on to a totally different system this, this afternoon, and the system was just installed in the executive offices of the White House, and basically what it does is it takes your food waste and it dehydrates the food waste within six to 12 hours, and in 12 hours, you're actually pulling out dry food waste that is able to be used as compost or soil amendment, and now you're eliminating three dumps a week in almost every school, and you also have a product that can be used on campus for teaching plant science and all kind of other things. So, there is technology available, and it's pretty much ready to be installed, so just making sure that the contract is flexible enough to be able to move whenever y'all do need to move. I, I'm continuing to work with these people, and we'll, we'll be actually trying to implement it at Vermillionville, actually, fairly soon. So, just as long as everything's flexible, we can continue to move in the right direction. I really don't think it'll take that long. It's, the technology is here.
I hope, I hope before all of you leave tonight that you leave your contact information with the superintendent so that he can get in touch with you and include you to the extent that we need, need assistance in teaching in the schools to, to promote this program, so. Are there any other comments or questions?
Will this be voted on tomorrow night?
It may. I certainly, after hearing the discussion tonight, I don't see why it would not be voted on tomorrow night. I mean, it sounds like everyone here in this room, do we have any, any dissent on this? No. All right, so, this is a less expensive option. It is a more expansive option as far as programming goes. You know, we're accomplishing the, the, the goal of introducing recycling in our schools, so unless I'm missing something about this item, I would imagine that it'll be voted on tomorrow night. Would you motion recommend that we... I know. Oh, you did it last time.
Yeah, you're on a roll.
You killed me right now. What is the, what is the proper recommendation?
Recommendation is that we approve or award, award the RFP to Waste Management and to include a recycling pilot program.
Other than that, we're asking...
Go ahead.
Motion to, I'm motion to, to, to approve, motion to put it, put it forward. As staff recommendation, motion, as to staff recommendation to approve the proposal for waste management and a pilot program.
All right, so we'll get, I'll second that, and then we, if no one else has any comments on it, we'll go ahead and vote.
Did you...
You can...
It was the motion to accept staff recommendation.
ASIS?
Yeah, so you can just...
ASIS would...
Right, so you can, you can copy it off the agenda.
Okay.
So to be clear, tomorrow night, when this comes up, it will be with the recommendation from the Finance Committee that the full board accept the recommendation from staff, so.
Three, four, none against.
Next item on the agenda is the General Fund Budget Revision. Please, if you, if you guys don't want to stay for this other stuff, you're welcome to, we, we won't feel bad. We have a General Fund Budget Revision request for Fast Forward. Samick, you wanna handle this one?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. As you recall, last year, we had 13 dormit Fast Forward licenses, and Dr. Aguilar had them reinstated with the three schools that were currently using Fast Forward for a total of 16. We started with nine elementary schools last year, Alice Boucher, Carren Crow Heights, Dusan, Evangeline, JW Falk, J. Wallace James, S.J. Montgomery, Austin, and Westside, and then we had also five middle schools, Carren Crow Middle, Judeese Middle, Lafayette Middle, Scott Middle, and I included NP Moss Preparatory School in that category, two high schools, Northside and Carren Crow, for a total of 16 schools. We then added three elementary schools, Ernest Galette, Live Oak, and Ridge, and two middle schools, Acadian and Paul Bro Middle, in January for a total of 21 schools. The great news is, looking at this week's 2016 LEAP data, the index growth for these Fast Forward schools, I cannot disclose actual numbers, but I can lump it together to tell you that all 12 Fast Forward elementaries have posted growth, some is significant growth. Of the 12 elementary schools, only two had a slight decrease in fifth grade ELA. All other grades at all 12 elementary schools posted growth over last year's data. Five out of the seven middle schools have also shown growth. We only had one middle school that showed a slight decrease in their ELA index scores. So, at the end of the school year, we had a request in May by the principals of Myrtle Place, Charles Burke, and Acadiana High School that they would have Fast Forward for this coming school year. Last week, we were approached by the principal at Plantation, and she made a request that she would, could have Fast Forward at her school as well. So, tonight, we're asking the board for us to be allowed to pursue purchasing four perpetual licenses. Perpetual licenses are lifetime licenses. They are expensive on the front end, but I really do believe they are paying for themselves and will continue to pay for themselves in coming years. My request is that General Fund would pay for two of the licenses, plus the 10 days of professional services that we need to fully implement the, the licenses, and that we also use the Education Excellence Fund grant to fund the other two perpetual licenses.
Thank you, Ms. Samick. What, what call center in the General Fund would this money come from? Mr. Guidry or Ms. Samick? If either of you know the answer. I'm sure Mr. Guidry does.
I would say coming out of the Chief Academic Officer's call center.
Spoken like a...
Or, or being added there, I should say.
That was, that was an excellent answer.
Hopefully, that's a transfer.
Well, and that's my second question, is that, is it, is it a transfer, or is this, you know, I guess, what is the, where, where's the funding for this?
Couple of possible sources. Of course, one would be the General Fund Reserve. A second option would be the, to recognize increase in property taxes equal to this amount. We're, we're anticipating an increase. Normally, we do not record the revenue increase till later on in, in the, in the year, but we could recognize at least an amount equal to, to offset the, the total of these two amounts. And the third source would be supplemental MFP increase we became aware of that we'll be receiving this year. Equal to, again, we could recognize an amount equal as an offset to, to these two items.
What is the, what, where's the budget revision that will be on the agenda tomorrow night? What funding source would that indicate? Or have...
The, the funding source, of course, it would, it would, it's indicating that it would be in the General Fund, and that...
I mean, I guess I, I'm, let me, let me rephrase that. What revenue source, I suppose, is that going to indicate? I haven't looked yet.
It, it could be any one of those options. It could be, the motion could be such that the General Fund budget be revised to reflect an increase to fund these two expenditure line items, and that it, an amount of, and an increase in property tax, should that be the choice, equal to said increase in expenditure be, be recognized or approved as well. In that way, there would be an offset there.
And so this is a one-time expense, though, correct?
It's correct.
How much is our reserve fund right now?
Our reserve fund is, is such that we're at, at the three months.
No, over, I guess over and above the three months.
Yes, yes. Oh, the, the most recent number we have, of course, audited, is back in, in 15, and we're at, in total, if memory serves me correctly, we're, we're at the 75 to $80 million range in, in fund balance.
What, what is the three-month number, I guess?
Three, three-month number is approximately 66 million, roughly.
And how much of that, what, what was the fund, projected ending fund balance for the budget that we approved? I guess that's the, I should have asked that question first. That's the number I was driving for.
The five million is what we're gonna utilize.
Okay.
So, there were still reserve funds available over and above the three months.
Okay. I, I think it's appropriate to spend money over and above the three months out of reserve as being a one-time cost. This would not show up in the budget next year, and so, if you guys want to make a motion to that effect, you can make this one?
Yeah, I don't mind. Really quickly, if it doesn't come from the reserve fund, where else could it come from?
The increase in property tax revenues, or the supplemental increase in MFP revenues.
Or you could reduce the budget somewhere else. Was there another place it could come from?
Right.
If you chose to do that.
Would you be okay with making a recommendation that we go ahead and fund it and let the full board decide if they want to?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Motion that, that we approve the General Fund Budget Revision for the Fast Forward licenses and let the full board decide the funding mechanism.
Seconded by Mr. Broussard. Item number four, funding for Jump Start Student Credentials. Ms. Olivier.
Good evening. Robin Olivier, Director of Career and Tech Ed in Schools of Choice. In 1415 was the beginning of the implementation of the Jump Start Initiative. The 1617 juniors of this year will be the first students to graduate under those new graduation requirements. So, as a fresh, refresher, in the Jump Start Graduation Diploma, students are required to complete a sequence of nine courses and earn a credential in order to graduate. Currently, we have about 450 junior students that have selected the Jump Start pathway, and these students will be required to earn a credential in order to graduate. So, the credentials that the students have to earn do have a fee, a cost associated with them. We do have allocations from the state referred to as CDF funds. These CDF funds can pay for our state credentials. However, we currently don't have a funding source to pay for what's referred to as regional credentials, core credentials, and complementary credentials. So, in your packet, you will notice that we have credentials that are the credentials that our students are most commonly selecting, the associated cost with each credential. What we've done is we've looked at about an average of those credentials and used the estimate of our junior students pursuing that particular pathway to come up with a figure of what it could possibly cost us this year to pay for those students to earn those credentials. At this time, the state is not providing any additional funds to cover that category of credentials. If we don't receive any funding, then we would have to parlay that cost onto the students, and I don't think at this time that our students would be able to afford the cost of those particular credentials. If they don't earn the credentials, they don't graduate. This is a problem across the state. I've contacted many other districts, and they are doing the same thing, approaching their board for funds, trying to collaborate and work with local workforce development boards to see if there's any funds available. So, at this time, I'd like to make this request that we could receive funding to help our students to pay for credentials that they need to graduate.
Any questions, Dr. Chassot? Mr. Broussard?
I believe the answer's gonna be the same.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions? All right, then I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we recommended the full board to approve the General Fund Budget Revision for Jump Start Student Credential Seconded by Mr. Broussard, and I think they'll get the, I think they'll get the point after the first one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Centany. Just while you're waiting to vote, just wanted to give you a piece of information. We did, the state did receive $20 million as part of the 1.375% received last year outside of the MFP formula. We did receive notice of our allocation, so Lafayette will be receiving $624,000. That's one-time money. It's meant for programs such as these credentials. And so that could be a good source to tag both of these expenses.
You know we love fast-forward. We're going to try, we're going to find some way to pay for it.
Doc, you've been holding that one in your back pocket on us? Why did you just get notification?
Yes, sir. And I want you to know, we could have actually asked you for four licenses, but we diverted two of the licenses to tobacco money or EEF funds. Yes, sir.
If you happen to find some Pokemon too, let me know. That's a big fad.
I did download the app and I've got quite a few collected now at this point, but I honestly didn't collect any. I watched a nephew do it for me.
Right, I got you.
You think the cell phone policy is a problem now?
Oh.
Wait till school, wait till school scores next week.
We need to add an addendum.
Somebody puts a Pokéstop at LJ Alamo.
You're gonna, while we're waiting, obviously, there's one directly by Paul Bro. There's one directly by Paul Bro. Like you can access it from the football field. I'm like, oh.
Oh, that is not good.
Yeah. Surprisingly, while we're waiting, Walmart has had to put up signs that inform you-
Three, four, none against.
You can't go behind these closed doors. Folks are just walking with their hands down.
Item number five, the request for a waiver from the bus driver substitute pay provision. Mr. Guidry? Mr. Craig?
Yes, currently, the provision, the salary booklet provides for substitute bus drivers or requires that substitute bus drivers have to drive 10 consecutive days for the same bus driver before their daily, their substitute pay increases to the daily rate on the bus driver's salary schedule, zero years of experience. This request is to waive that requirement for one year. We feel that the benefit would be, it would increase our substitute pool and as well as free up some of our transportation central office employees whom we're going to need to, here in the office, working on the rerouting of all of our bus routes. This past year, it's more than, more than half of the department was on a route just about every day of the week in addition to being expected to perform their regular, fulfill their regular job duties here at central office. So we feel that that would be an added benefit as well. And then once the rerouting is done and the savings from that project are determined, then we would revisit it for future years. So that's why we're only asking for one year. If the savings are available to consider beyond that, of course, we would come back at a later date, but that, right now, we're focused on the 1617 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Guidry. Any questions? Dr. Chasson?
I thought I understood the exact ramifications of it, but maybe you can help me out and maybe I actually do understand it. So the request is for a one-year waiver from the requirement that the 10 consecutive days be for the same driver? That's the only-
The same route. What happens is we have substitute bus drivers. They work every day of the year, but one day they drive a Northside route. Another day, they ride a Milton route. So what's happening, if they run a Milton route three days and then we send them to Northside for seven days, they don't qual, even though they worked 10 consecutive days, they didn't qualify for the higher rate of pay.
Okay.
I'm going to make a suggestion. If this does get approved, that you keep some kind of data to look at. It seems like this would make sense on a permanent basis.
Permanent basis, yes. There you go.
We kind of agree with that, sir.
See if it does increase your recruitment and retention ability. I'd be interested before we go, before we approve next year's salary schedule.
And absolutely. We talked about that back in May. We'd like to do it. And actually, the same situation happens with substitute teachers. They work every day, but not necessarily the same class.
Right.
And Mr. Guidry and I talked back in early May and June, just because of the budget situation, we kind of wanted to hold off on that. But we lose bus drivers. We're competing against Iberia Parish, Vermillion Parish, the other parishes for substitute bus drivers, and it's a way to help retain them. The money's already available in transportation's budget. There won't be any effect or budget revision request from us.
Same driver, same route, 10 consecutive days. My mind's going a mile a minute, guys. Let me-
And we have, and we have a lot of those situations, but we also have situations where you drive three here, two there, three there, but you drive 180 days.
Once, would it benefit us that once we met this 10-day quota? I mean, if the person is substitute driving for us, it makes a little more sense to me just off the cuff that once they've met their 10- Are we trying to exclude the 10 consecutive days or the same route, same driver? I understand two days in Northside, three days in Kaden Middle. I get that. That's still five days in a row. But are we trying to exclude the consecutive days? Like, once they meet their 10-day quota, can we look at that as well? I mean, if I know that if I'm driving eight consecutive days and then I'm off that ninth day and I don't meet the 10-day quota, then I start all over. But if I accumulate to 10 days, then you can probably count on me to continue driving for you once I've passed the 10-day mark because I'm not going to drive for St. Mary and St. Martin because the money may be a little better. I know what I'm getting because I've driven my 10 days.
That's absolutely correct. We're trying to get away from the same route because I can't guarantee anybody a route from day one to day 180 at the end of school. And if one person gets switched off a route every two weeks, they'll never get to the higher route around the pay if we go by the letter of the law. And it's, we are losing sub-drivers. Matter of fact, yesterday, I lost one to Iberia Parish. Because they pay one rate, no matter what, across the board. They don't have the 10-day grace period where you have to work 10 days. I do agree with the 10 days, you know, the 10 consecutive days, because once they get to a higher level, I want to keep them at that level. And they want to keep, stay at that level, so they'll stay on different routes just to get paid, paid the higher pay. But that's what we're trying to, trying to get rid of and get away from the, just the same route.
Do you have something? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a general model. What's the difference in, in the substitute pay, less than the 10 days versus 10 days qualification? Just 10, 20, 30 dollars?
The daily rate at the lower rate is 56, 45. $56.45 a day. If they drive the 10 consecutive days, they go in at 15,222 a year, which comes out to 84.57 a day for a difference of $28.12 if we have them long-term every day.
And that does make a big difference.
How long has that been in effect? The 10-day rule that we've got?
It was, it was actually before, before I came to the parish. It's Mr. Bill Semig that actually brought it to the board, you know, to have it that way. And it was originally written to just be consecutive days and not on the same route, but it was actually changed when it was voted on. And we were under the impression that it was, it was that way and that's how it was going to, going to go forward. But it was actually, actually changed.
You think this, do you know why it was consecutive routes? I mean, I don't see why it makes sense, 10 days of driving. And the more routes you go and having 10 days would make you a better driver, more aware of your surroundings? Why was it?
It's not, it's not because it's, it makes you a better driver with the-
What do you mean, more aware of the area?
Exactly. What it is, it's, it was trying to keep drivers on a particular route that was maybe hard to cover or something like that, which it doesn't really matter to me. I just need a driver that drives multiple routes. And it's actually easier, if you take a driver and you put him on a route for the whole entire year, it's easier on that driver than a driver that bounces around from route to route. Because that driver that does that has to learn different routes, different stop locations, different times, and it's a much more difficult job actually bouncing around. And those are the drivers that would get shafted pretty much if we leave it like this.
So in my opinion, I'm looking at like four different things. I'm looking at same driver, same route. So we're pretty much tossing those out. Same driver, same route, doesn't have to be that. That's what we're asking for.
Yes, sir.
Can we ask for no more 10 consecutive days? Would you prefer it just to be one base, one base rate that they're all starting at?
I can tell you that most parishes around here is a base rate. This is what we're going to pay you for every day that you work for us, whether it be St. Martin, St. Landry, Vermillion, Iberia. And all of them are above $56 a day that we start, we start at. Most of them are 65 and above. The highest one in the area, which is New Iberia, is $75 a day. And it's a straight rate across the board. I do believe there's some merit in coming to work for us for 10 consecutive days. That shows me that somebody wants to come to work every day. And once they get that, that time and they get to the higher pay of the $84, they tend to stay on that route as long as possible and stay working for us as long as possible. Now, sometimes it might be their fault that, hey, I need to take these three or four days off and I'm okay with them dropping back down if it's their fault. But if I want to put them, put them to work every single day, I want to pay them and keep them there. Well, it sounds to me like we have some appetite or some interest in going further than what you've requested, but we understand that you need this, probably need this before school starts. Yes, sir. I would suggest to at least start thinking about looking at what other parishes do and trying to align what our policy is so that we can effectively compete with other parishes. Because at the end of the day, that probably doesn't really matter what the three or the nine of us think is fair or right or whatever it is, because you're still the guy that has to go out there and convince him to drive for Lafayette Parish instead of Iberia Parish. And if Iberia Parish is paying $25 more a day, that, that argument probably not going to go your way. Yeah, it kind of hurts. Yeah, so, okay. I would start at least thinking about what a more comprehensive solution to this would look like. And in the meantime, if y'all have any, don't have any other questions, we can-
I think Mr. Guidry had a question.
Oh, sure.
Can you, can you feel Mr. Guidry kicking you underneath the-
Kind of every day.
Great, Mr. Guidry. What are we looking at here?
I just wanted to mention, if we, if we go beyond the waiver that we're asking for and also take a look at the 10 days itself, it's going to create compression in other areas of substitute pay. So that's why we didn't, we didn't look at the 10 days as well. We were asking for 10 days for the same driver. The same driver part is what we're actually asking for because the 10-day piece itself is going to cause compression in other employee categories if we look at that as well.
Can you give me maybe two examples, maybe?
Teachers and paraprofessionals.
And what is, what's the current situation for them right now?
Likewise, you have to work, a teacher, a substitute teacher would have to work 10 days for the same teacher as opposed to 10 days for Mr. Broussard, or two days for Mr. Broussard, three days for Mr. Centany.
Okay.
So you have to work, in the schools, you have to, a substitute, you have to work 10 days for Mr. Chasson before you move to the higher rate.
And that's very rare for a substitute unless, I know we have long-term subs, but-
It's, it happens every year, every school. It's a little more common than you'd think.
Okay. So just curious, the last one. If Mr. Broussard's sick and you sub for him, then Mr. Centany, myself, all nine board members, you still, they still don't get to that higher pay because it's not the-
They can get to the 10th day.
Well, not only 10th day, but not, but they have to require it of the same-
They have to do the same person. Yes, sir. And then if they get to the ninth day and then they miss a day, they start over again.
I know money-wise, Mr. Guidry, this may not be the, this may not be the best conversation you want to open up Pandora's box, but we really need to take a look at that. Like, I'm going to honestly request that we put that on the agenda soon.
Yeah.
Hopefully next meeting, because that's, that's a problem. Because I want to go with the most extreme measure and getting rid of it. Because I want to retain, I know how much of an issue you have with retaining bus drivers. I mean, if you guys have to drive every single day, I mean, it's taking you from away, it's taking you away from where you should be in the first place. Okay. Motion that the board approve the recommendation of waiving the 10 consecutive days for the same driver provision?
I second it. And to be clear, I agree with Dr. Chasson. I would certainly like to hear a more comprehensive for everyone, not just bus drivers, but if there is some compression created by doing this just for bus drivers, let's include those employee classifications because I think the same, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And I'd certainly like you guys to be able to effectively staff your departments on a temporary basis or an ad hoc basis and not be hamstrung by some policy that very few people agree with. I don't know. So thank you for bringing this to us. It is appreciated.
Before we vote this, then, are you saying, just asking a question? Are you saying that we are going to bring back to the table all substitute employees? Or just a question between it?
Yeah, no, I think what we're asking for is, as we kind of went down that rabbit hole, we heard there are other classifications that this might impact if we did it just for bus drivers. So I think a more comprehensive solution, if this is a good idea, and it didn't sound like Mr. Craig and Mr. Guidry necessarily came to an agreement or a conclusion that it would be, but certainly myself and Dr. Chasson would like to hear more about it. So if it turns out not to be a good idea, then it turns out not to be a good idea, but maybe it is. Certainly sounds like it has the makings of a good idea.
Mr. Guidry, pretty tough question, but could you look at the financial situation, possibly? I know that would be guestimates and estimates, but, I mean, I really would look, really would like to look at getting rid of that same day, same driver, 10 consecutive days. I mean, if you're driving, then you're driving. When I go substitute for a pharmacist somewhere, I mean, I still make the same rate.
And what I meant by compression is the daily rate for that driver would actually be more than substitute rate for a teacher. So when we do that, it has a much more significant impact dollar-wise. And that's one of the reasons we were asking a waiver for a year. We felt that depending on what the savings are from, from the rerouting, it would, it may open up the opportunity to fund some of the things that we're, that we're talking about. But we can estimate, we can come up with those estimates.
I like estimates.
Three, four, none against.
Finally, thank you for waiting. We really do appreciate it. I did not, I'll be honest, I did not, it did not get through my mind that there would be someone else from outside the system presenting on this item. Otherwise, I would let you go second. Not that this does anything for you at this point in time, but I do apologize for that.
No problem. Good evening. My name is Jan Janice, and I'm here with Louis Saab, my supervisor.
Thank you, sir.
And tonight, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share with you how Fleet Wright can benefit the Lafayette Parish School Board and its bus- how Fleet Right can benefit the Lafayette Parish School Board and its bus drivers. Fleet Right is a division of Shop Right, and I'm so proud to tell you that we're celebrating our golden anniversary this year. Yes, fifty years of service to the community. We give to the community through public, private, and parochial donations. We currently have sixty-one outlets, and we are South Louisiana's largest local convenience store chain. We have sixteen stores in Lafayette Parish. Over the past fifty years, we have employed thousands of people. We have collected and paid millions of dollars in both state and local taxes. We pride ourselves as being good corporate citizens. All of this has been possible because of the dedication of service that we give to our customers. Our success is because of our customers. They are our top priority. So, it is with Fleet Right. Fleet Right is Louisiana's leader in customer service. We offer twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week live operators waiting to take your call. This feature is unique to the industry. Our competition is all automated. When you call Fleet Right, we are there at a moment's notice to handle anything that your driver encounters. The driver simply flips his card over and dials the eight-hundred number that's on the back of the card. We are your service provider and can get your problem resolved instantly when you call us while you're at the pump. Our card is a fueling credit card, which is similar to all the fuel cards on the market. We all provide a fueling management system, which details all the particulars about the purchase, like the time, the site, the number of gallons, the miles per gallon, and the person who is fueling that vehicle. We all provide a card that tracks the fuel that is purchased. There are two features that separate Fleet Right from the competition, that is pricing and customer service. Concerning price, there are no ancillary fees, ever. The competition, at their discretion, can charge a two-cent fee for lost or stolen cards, and some competitors will even charge a swiping fee and also check your invoice for processing fees. That can be as much as fifty dollars. Fleet Right doesn't charge any of those fees. With Fleet Right, you pay for the fuel that is purchased only. Fleet Right also has the capability of offering a discount with Shop Right. Fleet Right is accepted at all the same locations where you are currently buying fuel. You don't have to change from where you're purchasing fuel to use our card. But when you do shop with Shop Right, you will receive a discount. There are two pricing options that we offer. One scenario is two cents per gallon off the pump price, and the other is based on the wholesale price of fuel, which is opus plus our ten-cent margin. Again, these discounts are yours when you purchase fuel from our Shop Right stores. If your Fleet Right card is lost or stolen, simply call our office and speak with our staff. We make our cards in-house, daily. We can deliver the cards. We are based in Crowley, Louisiana. Logistically, we are around the corner for your immediate needs and can deliver at a moment's notice. We're actually only twenty-six miles away, and this is very important to your fleet. Your current provider cannot get to you immediately, not because they're not willing to, but because they don't live in the community. Our turnaround time is immediate. Bus drivers sometimes have issues at the pump, generally due to glitches on the internet. If this happens to a driver, he may not be able to get his car to work. So, we instruct the driver to flip the card over, call the eight-hundred number while he's at the pump, so we can resolve the matter immediately. We issue an authorization code so that the pump can be turned on and the driver can fuel his vehicle so that he can get back to his route. All issues can be resolved when a driver has trouble at the pump, because we monitor the fueling. We simply have to be notified when he's having trouble to give him the immediate attention that he needs. Our dedication to your fleet is of our utmost concern. We want to partner with you to provide you the service. No other company can. Fleet Right is asking for your business because we believe we can make a huge impact on your bottom-line profits. When you shop with us, we can offer a discount, a discount that you're not receiving now. We also believe that we can streamline your profitability by your staff devoting their time to the work that they are employed to do. We at Fleet Right take care of your fueling needs. Our staff handles your issues, while your employees take care of their daily chores. Great service drives efficiency. When you choose to do business with Fleet Right, the transition will be seamless for the end-user of the card. The bus driver will only get a different color card. That will be the only difference for him. He will continue to swipe his card the same way. He'll even put the same driver ID number in at the pump. He'll put in his odometer reading, just as he's doing now. The difference for him is the color of the card. Transition from your current card to Fleet Right is easy for your staff. I personally show your staff our software system, which is simple and very basic. The ease at which your staff can learn the process will take approximately fifteen minutes. Navigating the system is elementary. The transition for all is seamless, especially the bus driver, since he's the one who's actually using the card. If the decision were made today to make the switch over to Fleet Right, it would be imperative that the old cards would be gathered and destroyed before handing out a new card. Once that process is complete, the driver is ready to go. Your staff is even ready. What happens next is that the driver begins using the new card the same way they had been doing. Absolutely nothing changes for him. Same swipe, same driver ID, same odometer entry. Your staff is shown how to navigate our system and learns how to view the transactions. Ordering new cards and replacing pins can be done via the internet if your staff desires, or they can call that eight-hundred number again for assistance. It's just that simple. So, I'm open for any questions that you may have, and I'm asking for your business.
Thank you. So, I noticed that you have in your book, you have maps of your locations.
Yes.
Are these, is this an exhaustive list of locations, or...
Those are the five locations that we currently, where we currently have diesel. And I'm sure all of your buses are using diesel fuel.
Yes. I'm pretty sure. Could you speak into the microphone since we're recording this? Thank you.
Those are just five locations within our company system. But right now, all of your buses can really fill up wherever they want to and where they're filling up right now. The discounts that we can apply for, you can apply for or receive would be at those five locations. But really, there's no difference of where they will pick up their, where they'll purchase their fuel. So, we just want to make, so the transition would really be seamless. There won't be anything different, other than the fact that we're a local company and that we can provide you great service if there's ever any issues that come about.
I'll keep going in first. You go first this time.
Who are we using for our services now?
Fuel Man.
Fuel Man?
Yes, sir.
Do Fleet...
Fleet Right?
Fleet Right, do Fleet Right offer the same that Fuel Man use as far as if a bus breaks down in Baton Rouge and New Orleans or something, they need to buy a tire? Can they do that with that?
Yes, sir.
Can they make purchases on this card, since it's mainly a fuel purchase card?
You can if you tell us that you want to be able to purchase things other than fuel. We can restrict it to just fuel, or we can allow other items on the card.
Mr. Evans, I have a question for you. In reading the document that was listed for us in the hyperlink, I just had a question when it comes to, and I appreciate you, Ms. Jan?
Yes.
Jan Janice. I appreciate, a lot of folks would have just said what they wanted to highlight, but there was two words that I wanted clarification on, and I'm pretty sure either you can give it to me, or you can, or both of you simultaneously, or periodically. And that's justifiable and unjustifiable. Whereas, Mr. Evans, did you get a chance to read their cover letter to the board?
No, I'm sure I didn't.
At some point, it mentions, because of the savings offered as available at just Shop Right and Tobacco Plus, Damon and the others feel that changing is unjustifiable. But they implore us to look further, that it is justifiable. What were your reasons for not supporting this?
Well, we actually took a look at all the five locations that we could actually buy diesel. And the reason why I wanted to do it, because it's, we have the lion's share of the fuel cost is diesel in the buses. The main thing that we have is just getting into and out of a parking lot. Some places, we just can't go, because it's a small parking lot or it's a very narrow, narrow fuel-up station.
I'll point out to you that I stopped at the Tobacco Plus on the corner of the pinhook in the thruway on my way here tonight, and I drive a little tiny Toyota Corolla. I had a little bit of an issue getting in and out of that parking lot.
That's, I was about to get there. There's two of the five locations that I promise you we probably will not use at all. And it doesn't matter on price, because we just really can't get into that particular location that you just mentioned and maybe the one out on Dulles. There is a couple of locations that we would use and we probably use now. Some of them are better priced than others. Some are way more expensive than others. On the fact that we have only five locations that we can actually save money, it doesn't pay us to actually drive five or six miles to burn one gallon of diesel to save two cents on a gallon. If we put a hundred gallons into a truck and we save two dollars on that, because we're saving two cents per gallon that we went to the Shop Right, we just spent two dollars in diesel just to go to the Shop Right, just to save the two dollars. So, it doesn't make too much sense to anybody that's involved here. You know, I've spoke to Mr. Bordelone too as well. It just doesn't feel like we should actually make a change. Now, if we reached out to Fleet Right to begin with and say, hey, try and save us some money, and this wasn't the case, they came to us. We took a look at it, and the amount of savings that we would get that was brought to me on paper, it was estimated at twenty thousand dollars a year. We spent almost a million dollars in diesel. If you want to calculate that in savings, that isn't much of a savings. But those savings were specifically to five convenience stores, five filling stations. That three, the two of them we probably will not use, and three of them that are so far away that my buses may not use them at all. So, based on that fact, we stepped away and said, you know what? This is something that we may not want to pursue. Because we're using a network now that Fleet Right uses the same exact network. You know, we can fill up it pretty much anywhere as we need. If we have to save money just on the five locations, we don't think it's beneficial.
Thank you. I mean, to my mind, I think we have a lot on the plate this year in transportation, not with the rezoning plan that we're going to be hearing about tomorrow night, but then also with the implementation of the new tracking software that we purchased last spring. Perhaps it would be best if we just, if you guys, once you get through the early fall and get your routes settled and the reorganization, then maybe you circle back and it makes more sense or you get more information or something like that. But it doesn't sound like you guys are ready for us to make a decision on this at this point in time. Am I hearing that correctly?
Yeah, we have much bigger fish.
Okay, all right. I mean, look, I'll tell you this. If you came back and said we could save eighty thousand dollars, we'd be talking. We'd be talking.
I wish I had the locations. We weren't asking you to change locations. We wanted to make that very clear. You do have the capability of continuing to shop where you're shopping. I just thought I could offer you much better customer service that you're getting now, because we're local, because these bus drivers do come in contact with multiple problems. They can't get fuel, so they're having to call back, and there's no one for them to get in touch with. We are someone that you can talk to when you call on the phone. So, please keep that in mind next time you come around.
We will. Thank you so much. I apologize for making you sit through this whole meeting.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.